Quite a bit. But that was more.
I'd like to order the Penn Trafford School District Superintendent's informational committee meeting for February 6, 2017, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And right over to Dr. Harris for special reports.
Sure.
We're going to call on, first of all, Mr. Leonard, the IU's.
Actually, you are going to pass on it because next week, Mr. Conway is coming from the West Burn IU, and he's going to do a ten-minute presentation about what the IU is up for. So we're going to have more information for that next week.
For our last meeting, and I asked if you would mind, because I didn't have a meeting in December, and there was quite a bit going, but he's actually going to bring the board up to speed completely on the operations. He's saying wrap in the last two months' meetings for that.
So we'll hear some more from Balthak and Career Tech, Mr. Petrucci.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. We met on the January 18th, and as you know, we hired a assistant principal, but the superintendent's wanted, a few superintendents interested in a dean of students instead of an assistant principal. From my experience, and I expressed myself, and invited, we invited all nine superintendents to come to our meeting. Dr. Harris came, and four of his other colleagues came, so that means we had five there, and four were no-shows. And a little, for all the complaining did, I thought we'd get a 100% attendance, but we didn't. And we had what I thought was a very worthwhile discussion, and I came at the end, and I expressed myself about the disciplines needed these kids, and my background of boot tech bus at Norman Senior High School for over 30 years, and how many times I had to get on a bus for discipline reasons, and support the principals, and make sure that the bullying was kept to a minimum, and I expressed that. And I think I had a few superintendents come and thank me, and one who I thought was very strong about getting involved, he says, "You're right, we do need a strong discipline all the time." So I think we left that way, and if you want to respond to anything other than that, Dr. Harris.
That was a very good meeting.
Yeah, I thought it went real well. I was just, again, in the superintendence, I thought we should get 100% attendance. Then we met with the machine trade parents, and some students came in a very packed place, which is very unusual. Usually, we, there's no one in our meetings, and includes the press. But they came because the enrollment in the machine trades is declining, severely declining. It's now down to about mid-teens, and for two sessions, in AM and PM, and it's, it's, it's just not cost productive. It's awkward, and they're going to try to increase enrollment, try to do some recruiting to get it up into at least the low twenties or something to get to maintain this teacher, teacher, what he wants, he wanted to keep his job. That's what it came down to. I respect that, because I think machines is extremely valuable.
I can just tell you, in the industry, we die for machine trade. So it's, there's a job that wants to go in there. It's not like your dad used to do it. It's nice and clean.
Yeah, and all computerized, too. It's, though, it's very, very, very strong. And we'll see all the enrollment figures, and they had a big recruiting session last Thursday night. I could not make it to increase attendance in all the areas, all the 23 shops.
Do they say why it's decreasing?
They, well, they said that, we discussed that, we, well, I don't think it's a personal teacher. Each one of you is a very caring person. And they just said that the enrollment was going down, they said the curriculum was pretty, I guess, like you said, it's getting pretty difficult with the digital work that they have to do, the CAD, etc., it said it's going down. Again, all the shops, like everything else we have, even in our school district, is declining enrollment. But to be a one-time machine shops, we had two teachers with about 15 or 18 kids, AM and in PM. But it's now down to about 15, 18 kids for one teacher, AM and PM, and that's financially a slow awkward. We do want to keep the machine trade. And then, as you know, the letter I, the email I sent out to all the board's members, eighty as well as the nine superintendents, in regarding to discontinuing the Christmas banquet. And I brought it up, and I was going to make the motion, and the culinary teacher also read my email, and she came to the meeting, and she says that she wants to keep it going. She says, "Because it's a great experience for kids to have the go-around waiting everybody, and Mr. Madarazza and Mrs. Thising were there, and how the kids were catered to us, and they waited on us hand and foot, they're very cooperative," and I can see where it's a learning experience. But again, I came through with enrollment, and people have signed up, and just to tell you what it does cost us, and the amount of people that came. The most important thing, the kids, the work they did, over 220 student hours, and that preparation for the time they set the tables down, and chairs, and sitter, and the food, purchasing the food, all this. The hors d'oeuvres were $1,700. Desserts were $284. Berries was $235. Miss lane's paper, the...
Sundry's.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Sundry's right, was $199. The total price was $2,591 put on the Christmas banquet. Last year was $3,898, and they cut down $1,300, which was very nice, um, but again, you had nine board members from every school district, that's 81 right there, you had nine superintendents, and we only had five superintendents to even show up for that, which, again, I don't understand that, why, we should have 100% attendance at that banquet. That's how hard those kids work. And then you have the student of the years, we had two of them, and their parents, you have approximately 100 people there. Only 31 people showed up. Lot of empty, a lot of empty seats, and for all the hard work those kids did, I just, it just bothered me. The culinary teacher, she said, "We don't want to discontinue." Kind of me, came out, and I says, "Okay, we're going to move it back one week." So next December, it'll be the second Wednesday in December, instead of the third Wednesday, which we always have our meeting. So we're going to see if that works, helps increase attendance, and pushing it was second by the school director from Greensburg-Salem, Ms. Savage, and it was unanimously approved. So tenures, I hope it picks up, but when you're down to 30-some percent, and all the hard work and all that money, it was, I don't know, I think I gave in, because she made such a sweet plea for us to continue it, so I went along with it. But that's, that's how that eventually worked out. Okay, our next meeting is the 15th of this month. That's all I have, Mr. President.
I have a question.
Sure.
I mean, are you saying just declined interest from the other school districts? You talk about that meeting, and four show up.
That is correct.
And, and then we have this banquet, which I saw, and Jim and I both said, it was just excellent, and yet you get 30% show up.
Thirty-one.
So are people losing interest in the VOTEC, do you think?
Well, there's many different ways I'm reading it. You're absolutely right. And it was, as far as weather goes, it was a very drivable month. There was no problem with the roads, there was, you know, there was a winter night, like 10 degrees out, it was like maybe the 30s, I would say, and it was, you know, there was, but why, I don't know. I know the location, but again, it is, it's central VOTEC, Penn Trafford does have the longest drive.
And we came.
Yeah, but again, they came, but, and you know, Tony, there were a lot of empty tables.
Oh, no, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just wondering if the overall interest in from the school districts is declining.
Well, apparently, the way we're looking at it, I can't argue that with you. I would hope we're not, but you know, but, but that is, that's how I read it right now. But to continue and spend $2,500 and all those 220 hour student hours, I just think that's, I think that's, that's poor. That's, to me, is very poor. That's how I feel. Well, we're going to do more year, and see how they feel about increase, between 70 and 80 people there. And now...
We can always try to have a board meeting there that night.
Well, you know what?
We did that before with the Career Tech Center.
Yeah, we did that. We could do that, maybe I could make it to say, everybody, yeah, everybody get a nice meal, too.
Get a bus.
Yeah.
In reference to the VOTEC, is there not an open house this week?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check on the...
The workforce.
The workforce.
Oh, yeah, we just, we saw something.
Work force for the, for the high school, for the kids.
Oh, I mean, Penn Trafford.
Penn Trafford.
That could be true. That, that could be true. Well, I'd say, at Norman, and I initiated, and it still goes on, at Norman's only district does this, and it helped out, and Norman's attendance is very good. Every ninth grader, every ninth grader, one would go down there on a field trip, one entire day, tour all the shops, even if the kid was going to go to Harvard or Yale, wherever the kid's going to go, ninth graders, would tour all the shops, that feed the kids in the cafeteria, and just to expose them, different shops at VOTEC. And Norman's enrollment has been maintained. I had a great rapport with the guidance counselor, Mr. May, Mr. Mayhew, he really supported me, and I've been gone now for 15 years in Norman, and it's still going on. It takes two or three buses, they take the kids down there, it's well-coordinated, the kids get there like 9 o'clock after all the other students arrive for their classes, and they leave about 2 o'clock. But it's, if I'm, and they go around, everything, everything is well-received, and it's, I mean, I wish we did that here. You know, I think that'd be a great experience for them, pick up the enrollment, just to expose them, to see what's going, and they have, they have nice slide shows that, like this machine shop, Mr. Stovall, they give them every time. I know my one female student, she did power line, and after she graduated, she went down to Kentucky, this was back in the mid-'90s, started getting, earning a job, like $14 an hour, you know, and they, and they had higher, and, but there is, there are definitely strong employment there, is definitely strong employment.
And you know what they also did, they were featured, they just said, when I thought this was great, they, our Career Tech kids were at the center, not necessarily just from our district, but Habitat for Humanity, took some of their skills, and were helping rebuild one of the houses. And I thought that was, that was wonderful to read, and I thought it was a great idea. So I'm not sure how often they do that, but the fact that they're actually out there doing that, and giving back, and using their skills to action, I thought that was wonderful.
Even the PTAR building, which we are now processing selling, it's, we got three years of really labor-free, well, we had to borrow some materials from the maintenance, building maintenance class at VOTEC, and those kids came, we had transportation, they came four days a week. I remember this, in the dead of winter, the cold days, 20 something, there was no heat in that building, they're team, we said, "We're going to bring some heaters in," and the teacher says, "Absolutely not, these kids have to learn to work in the cold weather," just like, and they, and you can, if you can see the upper level of that building compared to the lower level, you can see how big of an improvement it was. But those kids, they, they do work, and they do, they build dugouts, I think, for, I forget, two districts got dugouts built for them also. But, okay, but maybe in there, that, that's, that's a possibility, that's not something to think about.
We've done it before.
Yeah.
Not at Career Tech, but we went to Advanced Technology.
I know, but you gotta have a meeting the first weekend, December.
Doesn't have to be the first, we can always switch it.
I thought it had to be...
You have to have reorganization.
Reorganization has to be tweaked, that's a state law.
Well, they can go back and switch the, you guys can switch your date.
That's, that's something to think about, though. I could, I could buy everybody.
I think that would help everyone to do their meetings down there, we'll all have different rooms.
Same, we could all, have all nine school districts here. See if they get that set up, would really be, that'd be unique. The food is very good.
Yeah.
It is very good.
Christmas miracle.
Yep.
Matt and I, I'm sorry, Matt and I are on a committee as far as the careers, and one of the things we did for our first meeting was the lap opinion to the tech, the VOTEC-type choices, and you changed that. So we're apparently going to meet somewhat regularly to discuss that and other career-type choices, but we had someone from Hamel, right, in energy, in energy swing windows, and they talk about the, how hard it is to get people.
Hamel was at that meeting, teacher, and right down here in the machine shop.
Hamel has come to all of our meetings, are you correct?
Yeah, and he was very, very, we're getting there, very strong, very strong.
Yeah, because he was telling us, they have a very hard time finding...
Yeah, he was very, he was there, I forgot to mention that, yes. Very good. That's all, Mr. Stovall.
Okay. Yep. This evening, an executive session was conducted prior to the meeting to discuss the following: sale or purchase of real estate, potential litigation matter, confidential student matters, confidential personnel matters. And the board also received information on building conditions and potential projects and presentations to children. I'll turn it right back over to Dr. Harris for information.
Thank you. And just to remind you that although the kids aren't videotaping us, they are actually in the video room, and they're videotaping right now as we speak, so you are being recorded, and it is live on Facebook as she speaks as well. Congratulations to the staff and students of Sunrise Elementary School for being nominated by Pennsylvania to join the esteemed community of National Blue Ribbon Schools as an exemplary high-performing school. Sunrise Estates has been invited to submit an application as one of 13 outstanding public schools nominated for the National Blue Ribbon School. This year, Sunrise fourth out of 1,551 schools in the state of Pennsylvania, according to School Digger. There's, George, I did give you a press release on that, so you have that information in front of you for the paper. So when they're recognized on their accomplishment, the staff works very hard over there, and should be very proud. And the high school also was just recognized. The college board is pleased to share the exciting news that Penn Trafford School District has earned a position on the seventh annual AP District Honor Roll. The annual AP District Honor Roll recognizes districts for increasing access to advanced placement coursework while maintaining or increasing the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher in AP exams. So they received their award, and for some reason, they gave me two, Ms. Kelly, so I'm going to pass on, I don't need one from my office, you can have it, with the high school, and I saw it displayed in the entranceway, so I appreciate you for putting that on there. And George, I gave you that press release as well. In case you haven't, if you missed it, last week, I was very happy to see Penn Trafford News come out, and they featured our prospectus, if you didn't get a chance. It was mailed to every single home. Penn Trafford News works with us to make sure, they save us a lot of money on distributing and printing our prospectus for us, and they also get it out to all the homes. But what I really liked about the, how it went out, is it came out at the same time as our business guide and as our township guide, because remember, it takes township and the business and the school working together to do everything it is that we do to keep Penn Trafford a good school district and a good community. So it was just nice to see, so thank you. And if everyone has not received a prospectus, George brought me all the extras, so please take one or two, and maybe 10 on your way out the door, we have a lot, so, do appreciate that. Next week's meeting is at 6:30 due to our speaker that's coming, there's going to be a Rosalind Wiseman, and are you going to give off more information on that when you're on? So I'll say that for you, but just remember, the next week's PT, I'm sorry, Penn Trafford School Board meeting starts at 6:30, so, because a lot of our school board members want to be in attendance for that. Penn Trafford Community Education update, the purse bash was held last month since the last time we've met, and we raised 15,000?
Over 15,000.
That was the last, Ms. Kelly, because she's actually, was the one who coordinated the purse bash. Do you have any comments on that?
That's the best fundraiser we've had yet, so.
Nice figure.
Raised like $15,500 for the foundation.
It was a great night, and I thank Sean for working that night, he was one of our DJs.
He was a purse model.
Just doing my part.
Doing your part, I appreciate you being there.
He modeled purses, yes he did.
He modeled purses.
Yes, he did.
Phil Kachasik, thank you so much for coming that night, too, as well.
I'm very proud to be involved with it, Amy, you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Every single dollar will be right back into our schools, which is why we do it.
Scott Engleis, thank you for coming.
Thank Scott and Marty's wives for being there and spending all their money.
We do appreciate that. Because it was a good night, like I said, it's a lot of night, lot of fun, the excitement in the room for the purses is great, so, just, just amazing, so really thank you. And like Phil said, everything goes back to the school district for grants. I just sent out the grant last week, they're due the February 26th, so the teachers now compete for that money that we raised. I have a lot of teachers who do submit, so I appreciate it, and actually, even outside the grants, already my staff of teachers collected over $20,000 through grant writing, so I do have a lot of teachers who do it on their own, so I appreciate every bit, and that's all free money, not brought in by me, but by my staff, so I appreciate them for doing that. Trent.
I'm going to make a quick note, and Amy, you can correct me if I'm, there is a lot of teachers, though, who are involved in helping put this together, so I wanted to say thank you.
Yes, there were, there were so many teachers that volunteered to help that I had to, like, tell people that I didn't have anything for them to do, so...
Yeah, I just want to make that known, there was a lot of teachers who made this possible.
I think it was 78.
Thank you for that.
Yes, there were, I was going to say, it was about 80 teachers that volunteered to come and help.
Yeah.
Is that how many were, were there, or volunteered to help?
They helped, and then, I mean, they were, they helped for a period of time, and then sit down for a little bit, but it was about 80.
Yes, that's quite a cooperative, you know, cooperative effort, so.
Yep.
I just wanted to put that out there, Sean, thank you, it's very nice cooperation.
My pleasure.
Trent, our student union representative.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I have a few items to discuss tonight. So the first thing is, we're having a movie night out on the Warrior Stadium. I will have more information on this coming up, it's still in the planning. I believe we've sent an inquiry to this solicitor about the license that we have to have in to show the movie.
We got the information, Mike, Mike actually gave it to me, and I also sent something to Mr. Vinson.
Okay, great.
Swing movie licensing, license, that's how, we should be sharing that with your committee soon.
Okay, excellent. As long as we have that information, I was just told to bring that up tonight and see if I could get something, but it sounds like we're already taken care of. So there have been some concerns raised to me, and I talked to Mr. Aquilio today about both of this that I'm going to bring up, and he told me that it would be cool if I brought him up here. So as you guys are probably aware, in the mornings, the section, the Warrior Center has been closed off to traffic because of two incidents involving people just getting, I forget the word that Mr. Aquilio used, but there were, there were a couple of accidents coming into the, to the school. But that, but closing off the Warrior Center parking lot has led to some pretty major traffic jams on Route 130, and a lot of students have been complaining to me and wanting me to talk about that here, and in fact, I don't come into second period because of my work release, but I will, I have asked that some of them to write down their concerns, and I'm going to go ahead and read those concerns. Sweet Buzz intersection is backed up with cars sitting for multiple green lights, and that's really dangerous some mornings, because people are sitting in the middle of the intersection when the light changes, and they have nowhere to go. All of the cars that used to turn into the Warrior Center now must go through the intersection. It used to take me five minutes to get to school, now it takes 20 because of traffic. One student says, "Please don't let one or two incidents affect thousands of people." One student says, "We need a system so students who are late due to traffic aren't penalized, also so, also so kids that are late due to other reasons can't lie and say that it was because of traffic." Mr. Aquilio informed me today that no student so far has been penalized because of traffic, but this student was just worried about it in the future. And then the last person said, "One day, traffic was backed up all the way to S&amp;T Bank, and we didn't even pull into school until 7:30, and they still sat waiting to get up the driveway." So obviously, I hope this is a priority. I've, I know I've been in some of the Penn Trafford Facebook groups that some of the parents were upset about it, too. Hopefully, we can get something resolved. I know Mr. Aquilio was working with the Penn Township Police to get a traffic pattern worked out, I guess, so that the Warrior Center could be opened up again, but hopefully, this is resolved quickly so that we can get students not sitting in traffic 20 minutes getting to school. The other thing is the, I tried to put one in between each of you, but if you don't have one, I'll be happy to email it to you, is the Penn Trafford High School Student Rights and Privileges. So day one, when I was appointed to this position, I came to my first school board meeting, and I announced some of the initiatives that I was going to take, and this was on the top of my list. Basically, I'll just give you a quick history of this. In ninth grade, four years ago, we, Mr. Divins, who's an excellent teacher in this district, told us to make a bill, and we were supposed to act as our representative, and my bill was a National Student Bill of Rights, and I, I just really liked the idea, and I kept thinking about it, you know, this is something that we can apply here in Penn Trafford. So two years ago... So two years ago, in 2015, I guess it was last school year actually, we formed, the student union formed an independent committee on the student rights and privileges and we did some pretty intense research to Pennsylvania code, the US Constitution and natural law to come up with a pretty detailed list and description of what we believe our rights and privileges are as students. If you look in our student handbook, you'll, you'll find that it lists 11 responsibilities but no rights. And you have to go into US Code, and I don't know if you've ever tried to go into US Code, but the website is horrible. It's definitely not a user-friendly service and students really don't, are not educated as to what rights they have walking into the doors of the building. So basically we organize them, we would like to organize them into one document that's clearly presented to them and that's taught along with the student handbook so that while students are being taught their responsibilities, they're also being taught their rights. We think we've done that and the solicitor can, can check me, but I think I cited PA Code pretty well where it is cited. I think everything here is, is probably not controversial. I don't think anyone here is, is going to, to find much they disagree with. And the fact is, is that this school board and the school has respected for the most part what we believe our rights are. But the fact remains that students need to know them. There's a huge fallacy that, that when students walk into these doors, they lose all of their rights. That's simply not true. That's not true with US, with US Code, with PA Code or according to our student handbook. The fact is, is that we're still humans and we still do have rights even though you guys assume in loco parentis. And we think that we have, we've come up with a good, a good solution. So basically what we would like, and the student union has asked me to present it in this fashion, we, we plan on working with Mr. Aquilio because Mr. Aquilio agrees that the student handbook is, is pretty badly organized. It hasn't really changed in 30 years and basically what's happened is that it's, things have been piled up and switched around in such a way that it just, it's not a good document and it doesn't make a lot of sense. It doesn't, it's not, it doesn't get across the, the intent of what it's supposed to actually be doing. So we want to sit down and we want to help rewrite the handbook, but what we really want is we want this to be included. So this will take, we're going to work with Mr. Aquilio, but we would also like to work with the board because of course you do approve the student handbook before each academic year. So I would like all of you to take the time and read this and possible approve it to be added into the student handbook and I will gladly take questions on it.
So you are working with Mr. Aquilio on it right now?
Yes. Mr. Aquilio has actually been on this since 2015 when we first had our Student Bill of Rights meeting. He has my first draft, this is our third draft. Like, like I said, like we've really been working on this. Our first draft, I think, was only two pages. It was like 12, 12-size font, like it was not detailed, it didn't cite any of the things that we cited, it didn't have any precedent, but we worked to make it into something that is really legitimate and is, we think, an accurate reflection of what, what our rights are. But he's been on it, he's been in on since 2015.
Trent, I would recommend that Mr. Aquilio and our district solicitor review the document and make any necessary adjustments. I think that the board and administration is certainly willing to make any, any adjustments that we think are reasonable, but I will tell you that I know about five years ago, Mr. Brungo's office was a part of revising our handbook and made a number of suggestions and modifications to the handbook, so we took his recommendations and put them in here.
Excellent.
So if that process needs to be done again, we're certainly willing to do that, but I, that's where I would recommend the board go with this at this point.
All right.
Trent, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the traffic situation and the closing of the Warrior Center.
Yes.
Do you have any suggestions, but you know why it was closed, I guess, correct?
So what Mr. Aquilio has told me is that two cars were clipped. It's kind of a blind spot because of the way traffic works when you're pulling out of the Warrior Center for that main driveway, you can't, you can't really see the cars coming because of the traffic blocking in this direction. So you pull out like halfway and then you gotta take, you almost have to take your chances. So I don't know if I necessarily have any suggestion, but besides continuing to work with the Penn Township Police to change the traffic pattern or adding another attendant in that second intersection.
Trent, that would, you know, closing of the Warrior Center certainly didn't help matters, I can, I can agree with you on that, but I, you know, I want to let you know that, you know, something to keep in mind, over the last two years, driving has been limited to simply seniors the last two years.
Yes.
This year it's opened up to anybody who wants to drive, any junior or senior.
Right.
Last year we gave out 170 parking passes, this year we have 300.
Yes.
So the real root of the problem is that we have approximately, what, 130 more drivers.
Right.
You put 130 more cars in a 15, 20-minute time span, you're naturally going to get more traffic.
Right.
Again, you know, the Warrior Center letting kids go through there would certainly alleviate some of that, but the real root of the problem is we have more student drivers now than we ever had in the history of the high school.
Right. We have more, we have more drivers and less area to drive, I think is, is the problem. And this, and the student that cited the five minutes, he was talking about this year, it used to take him five minutes to get to school this year and now it takes him 20. So yeah, I, I definitely know that there's more drivers than ever, but there's also less road to drive on when we close the.
Is it, any thought being given, going back to a word, just seniors only?
Oh, that, that would not be the preferable. I do not want to be responsible for that move.
Solution.
No, that's, that is not, that is, that is not the solution that I want to be attributed to.
Have we looked into, have we looked into the option of doing the HOV lanes, changing?
Yeah, I discussed that with, with the Township Police. You know, I think we'd have to really get some, some traffic studies to see if that is a legitimate way. You literally have to, we talked about having an HOV, the, the middle lane going into school would be a double lane and coming out would be a double lane. It would change between the morning and afternoon. You know, it's certain, we could study and see if that would be an option. I, just in my head, I see a little bit of an issue of somebody coming from the Dairy Queen and coming from Harrison City, both turning into the high school at the same time. And how would you, how would the officer out there coordinate that? I think that would be logistically very difficult for them to do that, but it's something we've discussed and we'll continue to look at that as an option.
I know that initially we had talked about that when we first designed that road with the extra lane.
Right.
And it would alleviate a lot of problems. Even cars coming up from the Warrior Center could, you know, be strictly that center lane.
Yeah, the issue is when you come up to Warrior Center and making a left-hand turn across a double lane of traffic coming down the hill, it's a dangerous situation.
Right.
It's no different than going on to Route 30 and crossing two lanes of traffic.
Right.
It's, it's dangerous, so. I mean, as you know, student health and safety comes before traffic.
Absolutely.
But we understand your concern and we'll see if there's anything else we can do.
I'm probably not the best help by that. By the way, I'm joined by my colleague Jake Veerheller, who's a treasurer of the student union today. I, I believe that working with other members of the student union would probably be the best course of action on this, on the student side, since I don't drive in the mornings, but I'm sure we can find you someone to talk to.
I'll talk to Mr. Aquilio. Yeah, try to.
Well, thank you, Trent.
Can I, I want to say, Trent, can you convey our appreciation to the students and the newsletter saying seniors impact community through projects and the senior projects that are reaching out to the community are just commendable. The, the movie night, I think, is an excellent idea for community outreach.
Yes.
So that really excites us to see you guys involved with the community and really, some of these projects are amazing.
Oh, over the next two weeks, or not two weeks, I will be presenting a few of the senior projects that have asked me to talk to you guys about, so be ready for those and we should be hearing a lot more from students.
Doctor, is that what you emailed me about the movies in the park? Is that what that?
Yes, I want to know who you had license for when you showed them at Trafford. But Linda Byers had all that information and then just sometimes how things work, just got an email randomly from Swank Music License, movie license.
Please have it at the BY Park in Trafford. Initially, it was real, real well-tended and it just faded out. And the last few times we had were like maybe two dozen people and, and as long as you, you gotta keep that high-interest movie. Again, we hit the licensing problem also. We never exclusive, but go right down to, oh, John Igor or somebody, you know, you just rent a movie and just, just watch it and there was, you know, 99 cents and it was just perfect, but then we were told we can't do it anymore.
Now, you have to go through the license.
Copyright stuff.
Copyright, but Mrs. Byers and your recommendation was very helpful.
Yeah. We have the equipment for it too and it's a.
I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And next up, because I see them getting antsy, Students of the Month. This is actually our favorite part of the month. This is the reason why we do everything that we do is for the students and we have three different winners with us today. And first, we're going to start off with the elementary winner from Harrison Park, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's my honor to introduce Mac Marasic as Harrison Park Student of the Month. Max is the son of Ron and Jennifer Marasic and has his younger sister with him here today, Megan, who also attends Harrison Park in Mrs. Kilbock's second grade class. Max is a fifth grade student who enjoys learning new things and always puts forth his best effort. He credits his parents with helping them do so well in school. His favorite subject is math because he finds it interesting and he likes to apply math concepts to everyday problem solving. Outside of school, Max enjoys playing baseball, especially first base, and basketball. He also enjoys building with Legos and fixing things. When he grows up, he'd like to be a professional baseball player or an engineer. Two of Max's favorite moments at Harrison Park are the time he participated in the school's silly string battle for meeting his reading goal and opening up his classroom's treasure box during school's PSSA assembly. The staff at Harrison Park had nothing but positive praise for Max. Miss Mida, his teacher, stated, Max is a responsible student and has a strong work ethic. He strives to succeed at everything he does and takes every opportunity to learn. He consistently receives good grades and he's always helpful to his teachers and fellow students. In December, his classmates chose him as the worthy warrior for empathy, which shows their respect for him. It is a pleasure to have Max in my classroom. Mr. Homan, another one of his teachers, stated, Max is a very well-rounded student with a great attitude about school and he always wants to improve. He's the type of student that brings his best effort to school every day. He is consistently ready to work and does not let anyone or anything distract him. He is definitely the kind of young man you would want to hire one day. Max is an outstanding student, possesses many of our school's core values and is overall a great kid. On behalf of the students and staff of Harrison Park Elementary, I'd like to congratulate Max for being the elementary Student of the Month.
Congratulations.
Next, we have our representative from Trafford Middle, and Mr. Sullivan's going to announce her.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce you, Brooke Banda. Brooke is an eighth grade student at Middle School and she's the daughter of Kim and Michael Banda who are here with us tonight. Brooke is a high honor student taking all of the possible advanced middle school classes available. Mr. Lozaro, who teaches ELA for us, states that in his 28 years of teaching, Brooke is the first student to earn a 100% quarter grade in his advanced ELA class. Brooke's involvement in the middle school, playing, playing for the volleyball team, I think that's how this may have occurred, running cross-country, helping with student council and is a member of our morning announcement team. Brooke has participated in several Spectrum events such as the mock trial, invention convention and the pumpkin drop and she looks forward to some, some other events through the Spectrum program. This year, I think it's to, to note that Brooke has been faced with another challenge of a severe mental condition and she has met that challenge head-on. She has never wavered from our focus about what's important to her, her academics, and continues to have a positive attitude, like she did this morning when she came in, just said, hi, Mr. Sullivan, and hopped on by. She has shown time and time again to have the determination and drive to overcome obstacles. She is representing Trafford Middle School as a positive model for others to follow. Brooke is already thinking about the possibility of attending CMU and becoming a lawyer. She enjoys her, her family season tickets to the Pittsburgh Penguins as she is an avid fan. She says that she's not afraid to try a new thing, especially when Dad introduces new foods to her. But she also likes spending time with friends and family. There's a few things that her teachers say. Brooke is conscientious in nature and her desire to strive to be the best be are two qualities that make her stand out. Another teacher said, she is cautious, personable and a kind young, young lady. She readily helps those around her. Brooke works hard outside of class and always seeks a deeper understanding of material and content. Plus, we always have great discussions about Penguins. Brooke is hardworking, cautious again, looked to by peers, meticulous on task, requiring detailed attention, has a love of learning and is well-rounded. Brooke is willing to go the extra step to ensure her success. She's, she is growing her confidence and has made strides in becoming a more independent learner. She has a great effect on Trafford Middle School. Brooke, we're proud of you. Congratulations.
Brooke's a family friend, so it's really exciting.
From the high school, we have Ms. Amy Kelly.
Okay, and I'd say I had Brooke in third grade and she's been like that for a long time. So I have the pleasure of introducing Emma Nedley as our high school Student of the Month. Emma is a junior here at Penn Trafford. She is the daughter of Cory and Doreen Nedley, who are here today. Grandma's here today too, grandmas are here. I see them. Of the famous Nedley clan of Penn Township.
Mm-hmm.
Or infamous, maybe, I don't know. But the reason I chose Emma was because when we first started our Media Center tutors, we had student tutors go, go there and she has had like a following of people that go to get tutored by her in chemistry of all things. And she was sitting in Mr. Cap's office and she said, but I love chemistry and I love teaching people chemistry. And I thought, oh my God, where did she come from? So that was, she absolutely enjoys that job, which I thought she'd be the perfect candidate then for this. Emma plays, plays softball, used to play volleyball because I, because I was her volleyball coach at one time. And even coaching her in volleyball, she was extremely coachable, always happy, always smiling, did whatever I told her to do and didn't really question anything, so that's, that's a coachable kid. So I asked also all your teachers what they thought. See if you can guess who said what.
Stalin.
Yeah?
I don't know which one it was.
Well, I'll read them to you and then you tell me. One says, she's ready and willing to help and always positive, doesn't complain about anything. That's exactly what I just said too. So that's one. Another one said, she's an ex-student and a role model and especially with group work. She is a leader and a delight to have in class. Another one said that she's extremely dedicated to her education and helping others. She's the most conscientious student that I've ever had and she is a delight. So it's two times someone said you're a delight. And then last, one of your teachers said that Emma is an essential piece of my class. She's not only conscientious and a perfectionist, but she also has a great sense of humor about things. She is patient with her peers, yet does not shy away from putting her foot down when she believes that her method, process or answer is correct. I have heard from several students how much she has helped them in the tutoring room and Emma herself has said that she enjoys her time tutoring. I'd take 100 Emmas. So that is why I chose Emma Nedley as the high school Student of the Month. So that is why I chose Emma Nedley as the high school Student of the Month.
And we're going to take a quick photo off. If the three winners can please come over here for the news.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.[615.16]
If the three winners can please come over here for the news.
Speaker from PNC Capital Markets.
Yeah, as everybody recalls, I'm sure, put together the 1617, we included in there additional debt service to do a approximately $5 million borrowing so that we could take care of some of the capital repairs that are needed to right the district. Since funds are somewhat limited, we can't embark on a whole building program. You know, the board decided at that time that the best plan of action for the short term was to borrow $5 million and that could address a lot of our immediate needs. During this discussion, we also talked about some what-if scenarios, what it would look like if we could possibly do another building sooner rather than later. So with us tonight is Tony Masiti from PNC Capital Markets. Most of you probably remember Tony, he's been here several times now. And he's going to give us an overview of what the $5 million borrowing that we're ready to go forward with looks like and what we could possibly do if, or what would be necessary if we wanted to do another $35 million building project. So with that, without further ado, Tony, I turn the audience over to you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you again for the opportunity to present to the district. What I put together was a fairly succinct total market update. Instead of just addressing new money, I thought it was probably appropriate, especially giving, we're in a new year, obviously a new administration, and a lot happened in a very short amount of time in the markets. So I thought it was very appropriate to give you at least a brief, excuse me, overview. So if you flip to page three of the packet in front of you, just simply put, this is what the tax-exempt yield curve looks like. The green dashed line is where we're at today. And that line, as you can see, has risen above where it was a year ago, where it was two years ago. But the key takeaway here is that we are still below the 10-year average, which means even though rates have gone up based really on just a lot of presumptive material, if you will, and it was really a shock to the markets coming out of the election. A lot of folks actually thought the opposite would happen depending on which party won the White House. But immediately, it was, instead of looked at being stagnant to growth, what it was looked at as business positive. And when that occurred, we saw a lot of money transfer out of fixed income and interest-based securities and into equities. People took, wanted to start putting their money back at risk a little bit more, looking for a little bigger return. So you saw a lot of money flow out of fixed income and into equities, and that sell-off caused interest rates to climb rapidly. We lost probably a full percentage point between November and the end of the year when it came to where rates were in late October as to where they were in late December. Since then, rates have come back down a little bit. And what you'll see in a graph on a, excuse me, a subsequent page is that what has driven that is kind of a combination that the market has calmed down a little bit from this volatility from November, December, excuse me, as well as having money put back to work. They've come back, that money has come back into the market. And anytime that demand is high for fixed income, that drives interest rates lower. So flipping to page four, not spending a whole lot of time there, but I thought a critical piece there was really, if you look at what happened, you can see that quick runoff in the graph on the left where interest rates just spiked right after the election. And they've started to come back in a little bit. Where the graph on the right is headed is really kind of the market forecast based on what's happening now, the prediction of the Fed Board of Governors that they would like to see two to three interest rate increases this year, similar to what they did in December on the short part of the yield curve, which then becomes a kind of a predictor for the longer end of the yield curve. So what the consensus on the street, if you will, has seen is really a projection of where rates are right now. That's about where they see rates staying throughout the year with some slight increases. But again, that's all predicated on the business engine, if you will, of the country, the economic cycle staying on the positive track. There has been a lot of, we'll say there have been many voices that have started to peak around the R-word again, the recession word again, simply because they feel the economy could be headed to that part of the cycle again. More people seem to be on the other side of the equation where the economy is going to be in such a condition that it will permit interest rate increases. But we're already starting to see some of the bets made on that come back down a little bit where they were, you know, probably predicting on three interest rate hikes, maybe an average of 60 to 70% on those, maybe 80 on the nearer term and below 50 on the latter term of the year. Right now, you're starting to see all of those predictions start to fade a little bit where maybe there won't be three hikes, maybe only two, and we're starting to see that percentage get probably down below 70 on one and below 40 on the other. So that changes daily. So it's a matter of keeping an eye on that. But on a generic level, most economists and market predictors see rates, and again, using the 10-year U.S. Treasury as a benchmark, right around the 250 range. Again, briefly on page five, that's where the demand drives interest rates. If you can see those two red bars to the right side of the chart, between November and December, $26 billion flew out of fixed income municipal bond funds. And consequently, you see rates rise. That green dashed line there represents the 10-year average tax-exempt rate. You could see that go north while you saw all the bond money flow out. From October of '15 to October of '16, so a full year, and it was actually an unprecedented occurrence, was that I think there was about 54 consecutive weeks of bond inflows, money flowing into fixed income. That totaled $64 billion in one year that came in, thus where rates were extremely low throughout that year, throughout that 12-month rolling year. We're starting to see that turn again here in January. You can see the slight blue uptick in January. We saw about a little over $1.1 billion come back into fixed income in January, and a lot of that has to do with the reinvestment period. In the maturity world of bonds, you see a lot of bonds that follow the June-December cycle. So there were a lot of maturities in December. You see a lot of cash on the sideline, especially year-end, that gets put back to work in January. So we're hoping that that continues throughout the first quarter and actually throughout the year. I'll touch briefly on the refinancing summary of the district's outstanding bond issues. As you can see, on the right-hand side, simply put, there's no efficiencies currently with the district's refinancings. The 2013 series had a slight window last year, didn't really last long and wasn't truly fully there, simply because with the escrow, these would all be advance refundings. The escrow being left out there would have actually eaten up a lot of the savings that you could have achieved. But again, it's, if the district was staring at a substantial need and wanted to take that off the table, that would have been an option. It was a smaller amount, so it was one of those situations where continue to monitor as we always do. And really what it speaks to is the interest rate that the district has been able to garner on its existing issues for the high school project. And for instance, the 2012 issue has a weighted average rate right now of around 2%, which obviously extremely low. The series of '13, just around 3.3%. The series of '14, 2.49, and the series of '15, 2.84%. That's pretty low-cost money. So it'd be tough to refund those even in the lowest of markets. But again, as you approach the call dates, they become current refundings, 2018, 2019, and 2020, respectively. Now you'll probably start to see some of those efficiencies as those bonds move down the yield curve. But again, extremely low interest rates that were achieved on these bond issues will make refunding efficiency tough to gather, at least in the short term. So flipping over to page nine, what I did was show, and not necessarily polar extremes, but just two kind of relevant benchmarks that I have been delivering to the district over time. This would be a $5 million funded project on both scenarios. And one looks at it based on basically 1.4 mil added on to the debt service side of the expenditures. So here, you would be spending about $385,000 a year. And if you did that as a level debt service scenario, putting that $385,000 to work, you could go out basically 18 years and that would be enough to raise the $5 million in project. You wouldn't need to take that all the way out to 20, 19, 20, 21, or, you know, all the way out to 25 years to get to $5 million if you needed to do that. And you could make more proceeds the longer you went out. But to generate $5 million of net project at current market conditions, you could go out 18 years and generate the $5 million, again, maximizing the 385 per year added on to debt service. The other scenario we looked at was really a continuation of kind of the sloping debt service that the district had been utilizing to keep debt as short as possible. And in this instance, you could actually go out one less year, kind of do a wraparound and tack the bulk of the debt to the back end of the bond issue. And in that scenario, it would be about 192. And I kind of did that purposefully to do half of the 385. So instead of the 1.4 mil equivalent, it would be below a mil, .7. And the 192,000 would put the overall structure at about 2.8 million in aggregate. And it would, again, take one less year so you could get that $5 million worth of proceeds and have it paid off within 17 years. And I'll show that graphically on the next page. But again, on this page, I wanted to just show you kind of the different structures and the impact it had on the aggregate. And the other thing not considered on this $5 million page would be the expected reimbursement coming from PDE. As we did with this initial project for the high school, it was more prudent in discussions with Brett to make sure that on a gross basis, that the district had the capacity to take on that project. And at worst-case scenario, if there was no money coming in from PDE and reimbursement was drastically changed or lowered, could the district put this all on and not have an impact to its existing debt structure? And because of the district's management and because of the district's existing debt profile, that was able to be achieved. And so that has really afforded the district, you know, great opportunity when it looks to borrow in the future in the structure of its debt. And you did that on a gross basis. So any reimbursement that does come in from the state becomes something that can be applied either to this or other projects. Graphically on page 10, you can see the difference between the two structures. The hard line is the level annual debt service adding $385,000 per year approximately for 18 years. The lighter green bars represent the wraparound structure, if you will, and showing that going out 17 years. And again, both of those generate $5 million in net project proceeds right now. So you can see the two differing structures. And again, these aren't hard and fast. If the district said, well, we could use 5.5 million, we could use 6 million total, you're going to be able to fit that within these structures. It really becomes how far up to the 385 would we like to spend and how much can we generate if we wanted to take that out 20 years? That's, you know, another option. Or in the slope scenario, if we did take that out another two to three years and we were willing to go up to, say, $210,000, just to pick a random figure, that we could spend in debt service, what would that generate for us? So you're not landlocked, so to speak, by these two. It's exactly how much do we think this next chunk of project will be and is prudent to undertake right now. And both structures will accommodate that. I'll pause there. Any questions on kind of the $5 million scenarios that we've discussed?
Questions?
Okay. And then moving on to page 11, and this is where the hypothetical full $35 million projects would look. And again, just to be, kind of give at least a complete picture or best-case scenario picture here, I did go ahead and add in the estimated PDE reimbursement from the current project. And again, the peak years, that's going to bring about $600,000 worth of reimbursement in on the existing series. So what we did there was take the $35 million and do kind of the same looks at it. What if we borrowed this level and how could we get to 35 million? Here, it would, we would go all the way out to 30 years. And it would go out to 2047, and it would add about just shy of $2.1 million to annual debt service if you went and borrowed the full 35 million in one fell swoop in the current markets. That would bring the aggregate peak level to about 4.1 million. The other look at it would be, again, to employ that same type of sloping debt service as a wraparound, creating more space in the future and not eating up all that capacity for the full 30 years, but rather allowing the debt service to fit around the structure the district has in place today. And you could take that and what you would be adding over your peak would be just shy of 1.7 million over the peak years. And that would take your aggregate peak to about 3.76 million. And that last page, and on page 12, I do apologize for the title carried over from the $5 million scenario as opposed to page 11's title. But the graphing there, you know, is representing the same structure. The hard orange line would be 35 million borrowed as 30-year level annual payments. And the shaded orange line, excuse me, bars would show that as the, if we took this sloping wrap approach as we did with the earlier $35 million project. And you can see there the impact on the state reimbursement coming in, where you see the lowered blue bars on the existing debt service. So you can see how it created a little more of a pocket to fit in this larger amount of debt. Same situation would occur on the $5 million component once the $600,000 a year we know starts coming in and does begin to cash flow. As folks know, the state has taken differing approaches to their kickstarting of reimbursement again. The prior approved projects and delayed reimbursement to the previous, previously approved projects started to flow in November and then, or with the issuance in November, started to flow in December. And now the state is waiting on the timing to do another borrowing, to actually start paying on currently approved projects going forward. And for right now, that's their interim plan to make sure that reimbursement does flow.
So Tony, question then. Is it fairly accurate to say that even with the plan on reimbursement, the district would need to incur an additional $900,000 to $1,200,000 in debt service to do a $35 million project?
That's accurate, yes.
So in our case, you know, 2.75 a mil, you're looking at somewhere near four mils that we would have to raise to do a project soon.
That's over 20 years? The 35 would be over 30, correct.
That's on the condition, too, that the money from state continues past the, I think they had, it looked like 14 years here.
That's one of the concerns we had before is what if the plan doesn't get through every year?
Which is about two mils, right?
Right. So that gives the board a lot to think about. Now, my question is, if we're ready to proceed with the $5 million issue, what do you need from us at this point?
Just the district's authorization to begin the, kind of the behind-the-scenes process of prepping the offering documents, making sure that all of the disclosures are put together properly, and begin to prep the rating, the district's underlying credit rating through the bond rating agencies. Moody's is who the district currently has as their rating agency, prepping all of that in the background. And again, that would not be contingent upon the size of what you would like to borrow. If that number comes back from board discussions and architectural concepts that, hey, I think the project's closer to 5.2 million, that number can change all the way up until we enter the market for actual pricing. If you were going to do the full 35, again, same exact procedures on the front end of the borrowing, but you would need to prep the market with the bigger number if, in fact, you were going to head there. If you were going to change your 5 million to, say, 7.5, I don't think the market is going to really be different. And when you're still in that mode, like we took advantage of the bank-qualified, the benevolent bank-qualified rate scenario with the first four borrowings, if you wanted to proceed that way, you could go all the way up to 10, and really the market is going to be okay with all of your preparatory documentation. If you go above that number, now, you know, you're almost into the world of a kind of a different set of investors. You move away from kind of the smaller bank holders that buy a lot of Trafford's debt and really like the credit. You're moving more into the insurance companies and the mutual funds that want to buy the bigger, longer blocks. So that's where you'd want to know that, kind of, a couple of weeks before you would get ready to go into the market, exactly what size issue that you're bringing.
Great. Any other questions for Tony? Well, Tony, as always, thank you very much. I know you have a long ride home, so don't want to keep you from your kids and your wife. I'm sure I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Good to see everybody. And if I'm needed again, I'm more than happy to be back to do further explanation. And if there's any more scenarios, Brett can contact me and I will make sure that they are delivered so that you can see the exact impact.
And if any questions come up, we're going to funnel through me and I'll put it to you.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Next week, under Athletics and Extracurricular, we're going to ask you to accept Horizon Nation, Employee Personnel, approve amateur coach. Under Budget and Finance, approve payment for credits earned, approve extension of auditor services. And Brett, do you have a comment?
Well, we may or may not then also want to approve the PNC work, starting to work on the bond issue.
Then under Building and Grounds and Safety, Employee Relations, Negotiations, Transportation, and Food Service, we don't have anything to report at this moment. Personnel and Curriculum, we're going to ask you to approve substitute teachers and support personnel, approve leave requests, approve retirement resignation, employee personnel, issue professional contract, approve conference requests. Under Policy, Public Relations, Legislative Title II, accept and follow the Information Committee meeting minute of January 3, 2017, and tentatively approve new and revised board policies and admin regulations. Under Taxes and Sterns, Census, approve compensation resolution for tax collectors and leases to recognition of visitors, which we don't have any at this time. Back to you, Mr. Silver.
Sean, you have any comments tonight?
Nothing.
You're good? Okay, then I'll move for a German tonight. Leading a German.